Okay, I will call tonight's meeting to order. It is Tuesday, August 27, 6:30 PM. This is the regular meeting and business session of the Olentangy Local Schools Board of Education, so welcome and thank you for joining us. Let me start with deferring to Mr. Kern to call their role, please.
Mrs. Dunbar?
Here.
Mrs. Feasel?
Here.
Mr. King?
Here.
Mr. White?
Here.
Mr. O'Brien?
Here. Can I have a pledge of allegiance?
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Okay, next item is approval of the agenda. Could I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Some moved.
Any discussion? Okay, see none?
Mrs. Feasel?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunbar?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes. Okay, first item up is a presentation from Barbara Sheehan from Tyler Run on the Ohio State Fair Spelling Bee Participants. Please come to the podium, thank you.
So far, so good. I made it to the right place. Hi, I'm Barbara Sheehan from Tyler Run. I'm here with the distinct pleasure of introducing two of my former students who I nominated to attend the Ohio State Fair Spelling Bee Competition. They ranked in the top 10 of 50 elementary students up to grade five, 10 years old. So I'd like to introduce Ms. Claire Shen. Come on up, Claire.
Hi.
Claire was one of our top five winners from my class last year, and Ms. Erin Haye, who is one of the top 10 winners from my class last year.[124.42][124.42](applause) Was it tough?
Uh...
Was it easy?
Um, well, sort of.
Did I teach her everything you needed to know?
Yeah.
Okay. Were you nervous?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would be too. Add 50.
Is it like the spelling bee show on TV? Have you seen the contest?
No, I haven't.
Okay. Guess we won't know then.
You want to spell one of my beauties?
How do you guys practice a lot before you go? How much did you practice?
Well, I didn't practice very much.
Really?
I probably should have.
You're just a natural speller?
Well, I probably should have practiced more.
Are you taking beautiful? Did you practice?
Well, I practiced, um, yeah, I kind of practiced, yeah.
What did you do to practice?
Well, I practiced for pages, like they gave me.
Yeah. Do you think it's something you'd want to do again?
Maybe, yeah.
Scholarship money.
Yes.
Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing them in.
You're welcome. Thanks for having them.
Yep.
Good job.
Well, thank you very much. Congratulations.
(inaudible)
I'm sure they don't want to sit here the whole way there.
Yeah, we'd like to have some pictures. How's that?
Girls be talking.
How are you? You are. You're... Right. Mr. O'Brien, board president. Let's stand if you put you right here in the middle. We'll stand right there. How's that? That looks good. Okay, well, let's give me a smile. One more? You don't want us to smile?
Can't get you to stop smiling.
All right. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Congratulations. Great job. Thank you.
Yes, the next agenda item is the board president's report. And what I've passed out to the board is a couple exhibits pulled together on enrollment, given that we opened the doors two weeks ago. Tomorrow? Two weeks tomorrow?
Two weeks tomorrow.
Yeah. I thought it'd be a good chance to review kind of where opening day enrollment was relative to last year and maybe make some observations. So what you should have in front of you, and I do have extras available, would be really two exhibits. The first is an exhibit that you should be familiar with. It's an exhibit that we shared last year at this time, which goes building by building, grade by grade, or actually, as you say, building by building, and looks at expected 2014 enrollment versus where we ended last year. So you can see which buildings are at capacity and which are not. Let me just say this about the capacity. It's intentional that that column is asterisk at estimated capacity because as we've discussed a number of times, we feel pretty firm on the elementary capacity, but we know we've got some flexibility, particularly in the middle and the high, around using schedule and different creative ways of really flexing that capacity. So what you see in the report is really our traditional definition of capacity, but we know that as we continue to evolve, that that definition will evolve with it. So, you know, at the end of the day, what you see about four or five columns over is kind of how we're doing capacity-wise, building by building. And, you know, probably to no surprise, we're at about 94% capacity at the elementary level. We're at 97% capacity at middles, and we're about at capacity, or our traditional definition of capacity, at the high schools. So, you know, it's a slight tick-up from last year because, again, we've got 472 new students or more students this year than last year. That includes preschool. It's actually a little bit larger when you do preschool. It's about 536 if you just go K through 12, so between 470 and 530. So on the next page, was actually something that was a little bit more interesting. This is at the grade level-wise. So what I took is by class. I took the expected 13 to 14 compared to where they ended in 12 and 13. And what you'll see here is the fourth grade is the largest class across the 12, so at 1,585 students. So if you really look at grades, you'd say 2 through 5, or probably really 3 through 5, that's the bubble that's still kind of working its way through the system in that the classes behind that are smaller, as well as the classes above it are smaller. And so that would appear to be based on concurrent enrollment, where we may be topping out in terms of a single class. What was interesting is that we did pick up 166 students from kindergarten to first grade, which probably shouldn't be a surprise because this one, you roll out of the half-day program into a full-day program. And so between K to 1, and then also the freshman class picked up about 30 students because you've got kids rolling out of other programs into the high school program. So those seem to be the two years that you're going to get kind of the big bump. The rest of them feel fairly normal progression from grade to grade or year to year, although I would say with the exception of third grade, we picked up 35, which I thought was a lot, you know, kind of in one class. So again, I just thought it would be good to think through or share with the board kind of what we're seeing in enrollment trend-wise because as we try to connect the dots, this is the work that will lead into some development committee work on how we think about capacity in buildings and how we're going to manage our way through kind of this third, fourth, fifth grade, working its way through the system because that's going to pressure capacity as they kind of progress through the system. But what was interesting is if you do look at what's leaving versus what's coming in, so this year we'll graduate again a little less than, a little more than 1,000, 1,069 seniors, and we're replacing them, really if you look at the first grade is probably more indicative.
Yeah.
Replacing that with about 1,400 kids. So from, you know, what's leaving and what's coming in, there's still a 400 student or about a 40% difference. And so there's still a lot of students coming in, you know, through the system. Any questions on enrollment or any commentary from the board?
Yeah, the other thing to watch is that for the third time in the last four years, the Parade of Homes is going to be here. And if you haven't been at the corner of Home Road and 315 lately, they've got that all cleared out. Those students actually are targeted to go to Olentangy High School even though it's on that side. So those would affect, you know, numbers over here. So Olentangy looks low right now, but that's going to be a larger development. And to go along with that, development unfortunately is picking up again, and that's what brings the influx.
Another one of Polaris, pretty big if that's going to be the zoning for our district.
Yeah, that doesn't seem to be as problematic. Now, they're saying more of a young professional, so I'm not sure what the yield will be there.
Yeah.
At least originally, I think they'll be very accurate, but as we know, as that goes along down the road. I think the other part would be the northwest corner of the district. I think there's going to be a lot of building there, but I think it's going to be over a 20-year period versus, you know, we've been told, for example, 1,600 homes over 20 years. When you put that in perspective, in 2004 or '05, it's 1,700 in one year.
Yeah.
So it's much more manageable when you get 1,600 in 20 years than what it is when you get 1,600 or 1,700 in one year.
It's like, you know, one of the questions or some dialogue we should have with DeYoung as they continue their enrollment analysis is the fact that we've had, say, two years in a row now of the first grade being smaller than the previous first grade, initiated by about 110 kids. Is that a trend or is that a temporary pause?
Yeah.
And then to the extent that this development continues, are we going to be back on the 1,500-plus per class again? So we're really going to look at permits, birth rates, and those things to see.
Yeah, and in the development committee meetings, Jeff Gordon has touched on the Polaris development and the other apartment-type developments that are popping up. I mean, he has all those yield factors, and has been going to all those zoning meetings and been discussing them in the development committee. So I know that they're there on top of that, and that's their big project for the fall. It's always the enrollment.
And I think we've factored in approximately traditionally a 3% growth over a period of time, which, but when you think about that bubble of, say, second grade to fifth grade, 1,500 per class, means we have about 6,000 potentially.
But if you almost progress that in blocks, yeah.
Those are 2,000 student high schools eventually.
Yeah, because they're not that, yeah, they're not that far apart. I mean, even though the fourth grade is definitely the highest, they're, yeah, 10-15 apart, and that's spread.
Yeah. I mean, part of what I think we should be thinking about is what are the alternative ways to create capacity?
Absolutely.
Without having to do frankly a lot of brick and mortar.
Yes.
Because while the classes are bigger, they're not a, the size difference isn't sufficient that would justify a whole new building.
Right.
Right? So it's almost, what's the incremental development? What's incremental ways of developing that capacity?
It looks like it is in our traditional, you know, counting of, you know, 1,600 for a high school or something, but in reality, since we know we have better building utilization, you know, when they planned it a while ago, it certainly looked like we'd need another high school. But I think besides the scheduling and technology changes, just the fact that we can hope more in our buildings than we've always said.
And we're a much more mobile society over 20 years.
Yeah.
If you don't believe that, watch our seniors, you know? They come and go.
Sure.
And we're an oasis program, for example. They come and go and go from one facility to another facility. And, you know, I think the fear was always to where are they going to go? Well, they're going to go to class. That's where they're going to go.
It's stunning to sit here and look at the class of 2026.
Yeah.
Just seeing that number is a little bit amazing.
The other thing to point out is even though you get more students, that doesn't guarantee additional tax dollars by any means.
That's correct. That's absolutely correct.
So, as we all know...
As we've witnessed, sometimes it means less.
Yes.
More means less.
Was he from the state?
Yes.
Good. I thought it'd be good to share.
Thank you.
The awareness to the board.
Very good.
Okay, so without, if there are any more questions on that, we can transition to the superintendent's report and Race to the Top update.
Okay.
Good job, Dan. All right, well, first and foremost, I want to welcome everyone to the board meeting. We do have a Boy Scout witness, by the way, who soon to be an Eagle Scout. I say soon to be, obviously, that would be in a few years, but just talking with him before the meeting, he's very much determined to take care of that, so we appreciate him being here. It's hard to believe, I think, as Mr. O'Brien said, tomorrow will be two weeks we've been in school. And I'll have to tell you, it was an absolutely, it says, smooth opening. I'm not sure we've ever had, I know in my time here, an opening as smooth to this school year. Just a tremendous effort by all involved. We were able to get around to all the buildings and into a high majority of classrooms. I think the, our staff members are extremely excited, which in turn makes our students extremely excited, and it's, you know, it's just good to get back. I know I ask the question in every classroom, "Did you think we came back too early?" And for the most part, from a student standpoint, it was not really because, especially when you get into the middle schools and the high schools, because the fall activities, whether it be music, whether it be sports, they've already started, and those kids are back. And we have a lot of kids participating. So it was an excellent start, and that's a credit to the staff members, to the parents, and to the students in the school district. Just a few things to go over. We have just shy of 18,100 students enrolled in 2013, '14. We have 149 bus drivers transporting 10,000 students over 12,000 miles daily. We have a custodial department that maintains more than 2.8 million square feet of school property on a daily basis. We have a food service department that serves 17,000 meals a day. So when people say, "Well, gee, it seemed a very nice start," I want you to know there was a lot of effort, a lot of work on a short summer put into place here that got us to opening day on August 14. Just an FYI, by the way, I did have someone ask if we were starting July 31st next year. Answer, that's no. It will be August 13th, though, so you can put that on your calendar right now. Another good thing, obviously, would be the state report card results. I think everyone is pretty well up to date. I believe Mr. Fettie, Mr. Rafe, and the curriculum department has done a great job getting you ready, as they say, for the new system or the tougher standards. If you recall, the results from last year were somewhat simulated in the dispatch, and we had a report card. Well, this time, the real grades are out, and we did go up once again in PI. 107.5, we were at 107.3. As you know, our goal is 108, and we'll continue to be 108 because 108 means we're getting an A in the PI department. So for right now, out of the three Bs we received on the report card, one of them was in the PI category. We did receive six As and three Bs. Second to Grandview Heights, who also received six As and three Bs, but their performance index is 108.2, and ours is 107.5. So in regard to Central Ohio, we feel obviously our goal is to have all As, but we're right up there at the top once again. And credit Grandview Heights for making that jump, but they now have a target on them. We'll be after them. And as I've already stated, we, as a district, we had all As and Bs. We have buildings, obviously, that we're focusing on. I think as you hear our annual report on a yearly basis, you know and understand that that happens every year. Most of the concern, if you want to call it concern or an issue, would be in the value-added piece, the progress. We do have some Fs on the report card, and of course, those are, most of those are in the value-added categories. Just an FYI, in the value-added or the progress piece, a C means that you met a year's worth of growth. An A or a B means that you exceeded. So we have those on our radar already, and we continue to work toward that, and that would be the focus of the development of the areas to address. But overall, again, I must say, we're extremely proud of the efforts of our staff members. We're extremely proud of the efforts of our students. When you go across the As, you know, indicators, we had an A. Progress, value-added progress overall, we had an A. Lowest 20%, we had an A. Students with disabilities, we had an A. Four-year graduation rate, we had an A. And five-year graduation rate, we had an A. So I'm not going to talk much more about that this evening, but I do want you to know that Mr. Rafe, Mr. Fettie will be giving you specific reports on this report card. And I will leave you with this, and everyone knows this one. Our goal is to have, be the first district to have straight As in all the categories. We get it, we do get an overall grade as a district in 2015. So our goal would be is to have that straight As, and obviously, there's no, there's really no discrepancy when you have all As. That means you're an A district, so that's what we're shooting for. Other good things happening in the district, the American Heart Association met with us over the summer and talked about some of our district accomplishments in regard to going out and our kids and our staff members doing things for the American Heart Association. And I bring up American Heart Association, I don't want you to think that's the only charity work that we do. We do a tremendous number throughout the district, but we are considered the top district in the state. I think I went over this part, first to receive a fit-friendly recognition in Central Ohio. That's kind of ties into that wellness piece where staff members go out and, you know, basically get themselves in better shape from a health standpoint. We were recognized in Central Ohio. We had the top red-out event in Ohio, Liberty High School. I'm sure you're familiar with white-outs and black-outs and red-outs. This was a red-out. This was a fundraiser. Their red-out was ranked number 15 in the nation out of 1,395 schools that did that. So we're extremely proud of the efforts of those individuals. 1,000-plus staff members participated in the fit-friendly, and obviously, what that brings is a strong partnership and support. The Heart Association will be at one of our meetings soon to go over in more detail some of this material, so I just wanted to throw that out there as a good thing. Race to the Top update, believe it or not, this is the beginning of year four of Race to the Top. That's hard to believe, and we were awarded an additional $13,693 Instructional Leadership Academy grant. We used to work with Greg Sampson. You probably saw that name a lot, maybe you did, and I'm not sure, but now we're working with Jay Wallenberg as a Race to the Top specialist. We will be implementing Think Gate October 1, and I do believe, by the way, that Race to the Top is going to extend for an additional fifth year. That's not official yet, but what that means is probably an additional $40-some thousand. So again, we're not getting rich off of Race to the Top. I think as you all recall, we got into Race to the Top so that we could be at the table during this entire process, and we're very thankful to our staff members for doing that. Hiring update, I go through this because I believe we were hiring people right up to the first day of school. The final numbers were in, 34 and 1/2 for enrollment growth we added, 9 and 1/2 to cover leaves of absences, 47 to cover resignations and retirements. I might add there, we do think that number on that retirement will go up as we approach 2015 because that's when the retirement system changes. How much, we really don't know. So we had 91 total potential positions, and they are completely filled, and I know Mr. Marsh is very happy about that for now, but I believe we had that discussion about next year's staffing at this past Monday's DLT. So you get them in, you get them started, and then you start talking about staffing for next year. So he got maybe a day break, something like that, and back at it. So we appreciate all those efforts. Agenda items that we're talking about, I know Mr. Kern will talk about these donations, but it absolutely continues to blow my mind. I don't want to steal any of his thunder, but you can go through the donations, and we're appreciative of the middle school and Johnny Cake PTOs. We're extremely appreciative of the Orange Athletic Boosters. You can see that was about a $482,000 donation. Liberty Turf was about a $520,000 donation. Those are all on the agenda. This district is extremely lucky to have individuals like that raising money for our staff and our students, and we're very appreciative of those efforts. Another item you have in there, I believe we had this group, EMG or Epiphany Management Group, in, what was that, August 7th?
Last meeting.
If you recall, and when asked how they were doing, I said, "I'll tell you after August 14th." Well, I have to tell you, they did a great job, an absolutely phenomenal job. So therefore, we're saying, okay, we're ready to move forward for the year on the Epiphany Management Group. As you know, they are taking care of our technology management system. In other words, they're managing our technology department for us this year, and we're recommending that we enter into a one-year contract with EMG. Also, believe it or not, we're talking about 13, 14 calamity days, makeup plan. In your board agenda, you see the three-day online instructional lesson plan or agreement that we will enter. Now, keep in mind, that's after day five. We get five calamity days. After the fifth one, you have to start making those days up. So this would take care of days six, seven, and eight. I don't think we'll ever see a winter where we get to that point of...
Armors all in access. Is that one of the...
Oh, yeah. Maybe I shouldn't say that.
That's where it...
But at any rate, we're taken care of through days six, seven, and eight on our calamity day makeup. Bus routes and stops, again, I can't say enough about Jody and her team for this year. I got the text at about 5:10 on the first day of school, that everybody's home safe and sound. Now, I'll have to tell you, that hasn't always happened, and again, we kind of take that for granted. That hasn't always happened here. I remember one year when I spent, you know, down around Meadows, close to LaZelle Road, tracking down kindergarten kids, and it wasn't 5:10, it was more like 6:30. So we were very appreciative of the work. There was a lot of work put in in the summer, and I think it was a reflection of all that work because it was a great opening from the transportation end, and of course, we're approving the bus routes and stops on this agenda. And we do have our board policy updates, which Linda Martin went over, I believe, at the work session. Upcoming events, believe it or not, Wind Out Run is 20 years old. That's hard to believe because we still talk to people that say, "Yeah, that new elementary Wind Out Run is 20 years old." And on Friday, September 20th, they're going to have a little celebration, starting at 4:30, and for both former and current staff members. I know Lori Kipfer is working hard to get all those original Wind Out Run staff members back for that celebration, so that will be on Friday, September 20th. Just a reminder, I know Mr. King has reminded us of this, but OEF Annual Golf Outing, Monday, September 23rd at the Lakes. Anyone interested in playing, there's the website, web address. And again, we're very appreciative of everything OEF does for the school district, for the staff members, for the students of the district. With that said and done, I do want to add, you know, we talked a little bit about the Ohio State Fair, and we thank Erin and Claire for being here, but we also had some other students that did very well at the Ohio State Fair. One would be a graduate by the name of Bridgette Feasel. That would be Julie's daughter. She's a 13 grad. She won Best of Show in the Fair's Youth Fine Arts Competition. I believe the project she had for our Arts Festival was the one she took to the fair.
It was at the same...
If you have not seen her work, by the way, it's excellent. And the other piece was, we had 46 Liberty students. Dave Rathge, who kind of runs the engineering and the CAD, computer-aided drawing, and the architectural classes. We had 46 down there, and 24 of those 46 projects were recognized with awards, including a Best of Show ribbon. So, and again, if you haven't seen, I think I've shared with you Dave's projects, you know, the hovercrafts and smart houses. If you haven't seen those, take a day. It's worth taking a day. It usually happens around February or so, just to go over and have those kids roll those projects out. And I talk about Dave because I've been in his classroom, but I don't want to shortchange everyone else because we have those same projects across the school district. It's just absolutely gratifying to see the number of talented... It's just absolutely gratifying to see the number of talented individuals, both students and staffs, the staff members that we have in this school district. So, with that said and done, I do have the comparisons, by the way, of the report card with other districts. I'm not going to share that tonight, but if you have questions on any of that, I'd be glad to entertain any of your questions. Yes, ma'am?
I have two questions on the state report card.
Yes.
At one time, they were talking about including cost per pupil on the state report card. Is that ever going to come to fruition? Does, I can't remember if that got included, because looking at the information that you sent us, we do have the lowest cost per pupil in...
Absolutely. We are hoping, because we will do well in that category. We're being told that, yes, potentially, there could be 15 to 20 different measuring points. I think the other one we talked about here was originally when it came out, the new report card, return on investment.
Right.
Was another one that they, you know, in fact, Michael Sawyers was here, I believe, saying, "Oh, yeah, we're going to find out how much you're paying, how much you're getting back. We'll have a formula so you can see that, what districts are getting the biggest bang for their buck." So, they're talking about cost per pupil, they're talking about return on investment, and they're talking about other categories. So, I would say yes, but I don't know when.
My second question is, do you want to touch on how our curriculum really didn't align with the state tests this year, but we did perform at a high level?
Well, you know, oftentimes, we get accused of teaching to the test all the time. And of course, we made that transition from, you know, the state aligned their standards, new state standards. So, and we're in, we're leading the parade in converting over to those new state standards. And of course, we're being tested on the old OAA tests. So, therefore, in roundabout way, what we're teaching is not what we're being tested on, technically speaking. So, at any rate, with that said and done, and the implementation of the new state standards in the school district, I think that even highlights more the job that was done on the report card. Because I think if you look at a lot of the districts, several of the districts in central Ohio, they dropped performance index-wise, where we continued to gain. So, I think that says a lot, once again, for our curriculum department. I know they've worked very hard to make sure that everything is aligned. I see these scores doing nothing but getting better as that alignment and that standardization gets better as the years go through. So, I think it makes that report card even better than what it is.
Yeah, the other thing I'd add to this, I've sat through two curriculum nights, we've got two more to go.
Yes, we do. Thursday night's the next one.
Yeah. My wife and I divide and conquer.
Yes.
Not that the staff, in particular, you know, we were at Freedom Trail, who did a great job of explaining the changes, explaining the rationale. And certainly, from a group of parents I've sat with personally, there's been no questions, no debate over the value in raising the standards from which the curriculum will be taught. I think it's been great.
Good. Mine is not a question as much as encouragement on the calamity days, even if you don't think we're going to have them. I really just want to make sure we're hypersensitive to how we relate that to parents. Because when it first came out, before there was any plan around it, my phone lit up with people saying, especially my one friend with triplets, saying, "How are my kids, three of them, going to sit on a computer all day?" I mean, there's just a misunderstanding of online instruction, that she thought they were going to have to sit for six hours at their grandma's on three separate computers doing schoolwork. So, now seeing it spelled out, even though we don't think we're going to use it, let's make sure we package that really well for the, for the parents so that they're not thinking that it's actual online instruction with a teacher on a video or something, which is what people automatically think of when they think of, "Oh, they can't get into school, but they can do it online."
Yeah, and I agree 100% with that, and I'm sure Devin will be on that. In fact, he's probably on it right now. I just want to leave you with this whole state standard piece, because I know it's been a controversial issue. And I'll continue, we've had a few calls, very few, because I think our staff members from central office, Mr. Rafe, Mr. Fettie, right on down to the building-level principals, right on down to the, to the teaching staff, they did a great job in the implementation and answering questions. So, we get very, very few phone calls. I know it's becoming somewhat of a political football, I keep throwing this out. How in the world is a curriculum that's more rigorous and prepares kids better for college and careers, how in the world is that bad? I don't care who developed it, or who devised it, or whose, you know, group party did what, how in the world is that bad? Should we go back to the old ways? I mean, we're in somewhat of a dilemma here, because as you know, we somewhat get criticized with, "You guys never change, you're doing the same thing." And when we do go through a reform effort, it's like, "Oh, no, 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 something's wrong here." How can something that's more rigorous and prepares kids better for college and careers be bad? I'll just leave you with that.
Well, there was actually a pretty good, I don't know if it was an editorial, a columnist, or it was a Dispatch editorial.
Yes.
They were talking about positives of the Common Core.
Yes.
Where it was born, et cetera. Fairly recently.
Yes. All right, thank you much.
Thank you. Next up is the treasures report, Mr. Kern.
Yes, I would also like to echo Dr. Lucas's in the opening of school. I had a chance to get out to a few buildings, particularly impressed as it there at the end of the day, a couple of the elementary's on the fly, how they're able to adapt to, well, we had instructions, they're supposed to go home with so-and-so, but then that changed, you know, 10 minutes ago. And able to handle that and work together to get it, it's good to see that. Knowing that I have elementary kids out there, two of them, they're in safe hands, you know, mine ride the bus home, but that they're in safe hands if, you know, things, at the end of the day, make sure they get home to school and home from school safely. So, that was good. On tonight's agenda, as far as treasure action items, we have approving the financials for June and July of '13, some appropriation amendments, and some donations, which Dr. Lucas kind of did steal the thunder a little bit.
Get used to that.
I was going to say.
Okay, I'll be short, like I was at Convocation here, and try to get things moving along. But anyways, let's reflect on the June financials, June of 2013 financials. As you can see, I'll pay close attention to, if you ever look at page three of the 47-page attachment there, is the comparative statement of receipts and expenditures for the general fund, which, as you know, we're, it's our operating fund, mostly what we do in this district, and our resources come from the general fund. As you can see from a receipt level, we finished just a little below projections. And, you know, if you're looking at those projections, those are from May of 2013, or I should say, the May updated forecast of 2013. If you do remember back in that adjustment in May of '13, we did have some positive variances going into that as compared to the October forecast. So, we finished years pretty close to where we expected as far as May is concerned, and same way in expenses, we finished slightly under as far as compared to the May, $101,000. Well done, I guess, to our finance committee and our district administration. Trade Office Todd is going through the May forecast there, giving us updates. It gives us a good start as we go into the year. We're currently now already starting the October forecast. September 18th will be our finance audit committee's meeting. Like Dr. Lucas said, we've already started on the staffing. If you remember the board retreat, the strategic timeline, August, at the end of August is talking about staffing for next year. It's hard to believe, you know, at this point, but I think that's the discussions that are good to happen now, good because they need to be included in the October forecast and decisions that we go forward, are proposed to go forward with, are talked about now. So, we're aware of it going out front, so we're not surprised, you know, going into next year. So, like, you know, "Well, we need this position." Well, we talked about it last year, you know, we talked about it in August, so don't be surprised since the end of next year. As far as July is concerned, July, you know, is the first month of activity for the year there. Again, it's based off of cash flow projections that we did as part of the May forecast. I would like to say one point out, one thing, even though it's reflective in the final August, you will see that for the August 13th, real estate settlement, which is just our major majority funding, we did come in about $340,000 higher than projected as we did in May. So, real estate is coming in as expected and a little above what we had expected. So, that's it on the financials. Any questions on anything in particular? Adam, I know you had a question, we'll get back with you on that one, on a particular individual thing. Anything else on financials?
Good. No?
As far as donations are concerned, we have the turf at both the Lontangie Orange and Lontangie Liberty High Schools. On tonight's agenda, be approved. I will say, I echoed this before, my board update, it was over at Liberty on Friday night. It looks, it looks real well. I look, I guess I'm an English person, but...
Sure.
And the comments from people were very positive on that and how it looked, and the benefits that I think will be for our student athletes that are out there. So, that's a good thing. But again, we're very appreciative of donations that we get for the district. So, any questions on any individual donation in particular?
Okay, perfect. Okay, next item is public participation session number for general comments. Do we have any?
We do have one, but it does have agenda-related, so that would be...
We'll do that.
Regarding action items number two.
Okay. So, we do have a discussion item, which is the second reading of the board policy updates, Exhibit A to the agenda. So, Ms. Martin, would you come up, please? So, this was the same set of policy updates we discussed at the board work session?
That's correct. It should be six policies to take a look at, five of them are revisions, one is a new policy. The first policy, dietary principles, reflects O-P-E-S. The second is the CIP. The third policy, extracurricular eligibility, that's from the Governor's Bill. The positive behavior intervention supports, that's also reflected in law. Student records, student records reflects that technical change, and relations with special interest groups is the online flyer.
And you guys, you pulled the inter-district open enrollment last time, right?
Yes.
Questions?
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we'll do public participation session number two regarding action items.
Carl?
Carl, I'm sure you remember, you know the drill, name and address, please.
Yes, Carl Salmon, 2135 Sherburne Lane, Liberty Township. I want to first mention that I, this is the first meeting I've attended for a couple of meetings. I've had either business or some personal things I had to take care of the last couple of meetings. But, I did want to express my appreciation to the public employees of this school district for their support helping me and others to defeat the Jet C income tax. As we've talked about before, we don't always agree on everything, but we don't always disagree either. And I felt the Jet C income tax was a disastrous and discriminatory type of income tax being targeted towards our public employees. I felt it was inappropriate, improper, and I fought against it, along with a lot of other people in Liberty Township. And I'm very appreciative of the support of the public employees in helping to defeat that. I think that's, the final analysis, what happened. The newspaper reported something else, but the real story behind that was much more detailed. And, I, again, I think it's one of those things, just like school funding, that we do agree on. I did want to just express a little bit of concern about this Epiphany Management Group contract. I have some concern, and I've shared it with you before, about when we let contracts for people, for companies to do business with the school district, I would like to see a more detailed and deliberative and open process. And I, my sense is that, you know, before we hire a firm from northeast Ohio, we ought to kind of look in central Ohio if possible, and try to find some local companies. We have a lot of fine companies here in the IT field. And I feel that, you know, putting, given this business to the Epiphany Management Group, I understand you've worked with them, I understand you know them, but it just seems to me that we should have a little bit more of an open process, an open bid process, and a process where we consider proposals from other companies. I can't for the life of me believe that this is the only company that can provide this kind of IT service in the state of Ohio. And I think there should be, there should have been other vendors considered, there should have been a more detailed and professional RFQ process. And frankly, and I appreciate the brief comments that Dr. Lucas made, but I would like to know more detail as to how they were selected. And I think that the public has a right to know how we select vendors, no matter what the reason is that they're being hired for. So, I just want to express my concern. As you know, I had a lot of concern about the legal process, the interviewing the law firms, I thought was done in a very, let's say, less than professional manner by the district's own standards in there, and the requirements that you listed for a law firm. At least two of the firms that I saw were totally unqualified, yet they were invited to be able to submit a proposal. We've got to do better. We sit here, meeting after meeting, listening to Dr. Lucas say how wonderful everything is at this school district, but we never talk about the things that need to be improved. There are things that need to be improved. We can do better in lots of other areas. And purchasing services is one of those areas. I think in fairness to the business people that live in our community, whether they're attorneys, or whether they represent IT services, they need to be given consideration too. And final analysis, those folks are the ones that are paying taxes to the school districts in central Ohio, not northeast Ohio, not Akron, Ohio, but here in the greater Columbus area. Thank you.
I have a couple of clarifying comments. I think a few things that took place, first and foremost, would be timing for Epiphany Management. As you recall, Mr. Palmeroy left in June, and we had a school system get started on August 14th. So, therefore, we had to move quickly. We did talk to at least two different groups, and we have worked with Epiphany in the past. And though there are many companies in central Ohio that do IT, I think very few work specifically with schools. I think it's evidenced by the fact that Epiphany is here, there in Gehanna, they're in Groveport. Mike Testa is our daily individual that's here, and he lives in Powell, Ohio. I believe that would be considered local. He pays taxes here, and he's here on a daily basis. So, the other individual that works with Mike, there are actually four, but he's also a local. I believe he lives in Dublin, that's not Lontangie, but that is in central Ohio. So, I think there were several things. And last but not least, we, I do talk about things we need to work on. I think I specifically talked about the state report card, how well we did, but I think I specifically talked about the areas that needed improvement. So, I am very proud of this district, but I do know that we have work to do. And I do know that we are as transparent as any district that I've ever been associated with. So, but I do appreciate the comments, and I do also appreciate Mike Testa living in Powell.
Anything else? Nope. Okay. Next is the treasure action items. Mr. Kern, you want to present the treasure action items?
I'll pull out two of them right now, B and D together.
Which ones?
B and D, financials and donations.
You're going to pull out the June and July financials and the donations?
We, that one donation for the turf was that Mommy Bay turf.
It was the, Mommy Bay was the installer, but the gift is from the Lontangie Orange boosters.
The directors on there, one of them was just convicted of disorderly conduct for screaming and threatening an autistic man. Another one had an assault conviction, and I just think that we probably shouldn't have hired this.
What's the relevance of that comment?
Because we're doing business with people like that.
Okay.
He's talking about purchasing services, I just think that research, we need to do a little better.
But this is for the donation.
I know, but it's people you do business with. It doesn't change the fact.
Okay. Again, it was engaged by the boosters, so... And that's a pretty strong statement to make in a public meeting.
Well, I like to recommend the board-approved treasure action items, A and C at this time. But I'd like to recommend the board-approved treasure action items A and C at this time.
So moved. Second.
Questions and comments?
Go ahead.
Mrs. Dunbar?
Yes.
Mrs. Fiesel?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Also, at this time, I'd like to recommend approval, treasure action items B and D.
So moved.
Second.
Questions and comments?
I'm just continually amazed at the, we've talked about it a lot, the donations that come in, not just the turf, but the other ones that come in, and continually the support we have from the community and the people that are working to make the school a better place. So, I would like to publicly thank the booster groups and others that worked tirelessly to make this happen over the last three years.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to add, I mean, they have worked tirelessly, and they're going to continue to work tirelessly, right? Because they've got some money to raise, and it's amazing that in one meeting, we have over a million dollars in donations, which I think is incredible.
They've thoroughly stepped up to the challenge.
Yeah, it's phenomenal.
Great stuff.
And I was at the Orange Football Boosters Golf Outing on Saturday, and they continue to work hard, raising money, working hard for the district, really making a difference. So, I think we should be appreciative of the donations, not critical.
Mrs. Fiesel?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunbar?
Yes.
Mr. White?
No.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Dr. Lucas, you want to present superintendent action items?
I asked to present superintendent action items A, 1, 2, 3, 4.
Can I pull something out now? You pull them out.
You're going to finish, and then we'll get to yours.
6, 7, 8, 9, 10. In other words, I'm going to pull A 5 out.
Excellent. And A 5 is the Wednesday, Saturday high school instructors.
Correct.
Okay, Mr. White, what would you like pulled?
Did you do 7, 8, 10?
7, 8, and 10.
And I together?
I'm sorry.
7, 8, and 10 for A.
Okay, so 7 is the employment of supplementals, 8 is the employment of pupil activity supervisors. Did you say 10?
Yes.
10 is the, to correct a mistaken payment to an employee.
And I.
Okay.
We don't have.
Yeah, it hasn't been presented yet.
We're only on A.
Well, you can pull I when we get to I.
So, do we want to pull A, do we, are we saying A 5, 7, 8, and 10 together?
No, separate.
Separate. So, we have two, we're going to break, in essence, item A up into three things.
All right.
Ready? If you keep a score at home, is A 1, 2, 3, and 4, 6, and 9.
Correct.
So, I have a motion.
I was going to say you're going to make him look even better. So moved.
Have a second, please. Any discussion? Okay, call the roll, please.
Mrs. Dunbar?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Fiesel?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
All right, now we present superintendent action item A 5.
Yes. You have a motion.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Okay, call the roll, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunbar?
Yes.
Mrs. Fiesel?
Abstain.
Mr. White?
No.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
All right, now we present superintendent action items 7, 8, and 10 for approval, please.
You have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Dunbar?
Yes.
Mrs. Fiesel?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. White?
No.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
And now I present superintendent action items B through I for approval, please.
We do D, you said B through I?
Yes.
Can you do B through H?
Do you like to pull I, the policy vote?
Yes, please.
All right, present superintendent action item B through H for approval, please.
Excellent. You have a motion, please?
I'm moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Regarding the, the contract for Epiphany, that is for $125,000, and it's, they're independent contractors, so we don't pay any health insurance. Is that a cost savings to us, since we do not have an employee in the district?
Yes. That would be cost savings through the insurance.
And the retirement.
Right.
And if we need to cancel this contract at any time.
90-day clause.
Thank you.
Yes.
Mrs. Fiesel?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunbar?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
And now I present superintendent action item I for approval, please.
I'll make a motion.
Second, please.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunbar?
Yes.
Mrs. Fiesel?
Yes.
Mr. White?
No.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.